Good evening, everybody. Six P M. We'll get started. Once again, introduction. This is a virtual meeting. Using the Zoom platform, members of the public can view this meeting live on channel eight. Or C three gov dot com slash video. If you are a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on. And be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on channel eight and on our city's website. The chat function has been disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I and our I T director will be the co host. To prevent any disruption, all members, other staff and any members of the public will be muted except for myself as the chair. The council or staff participant wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. I'll be able to call on you to speak. And the clerk will unmute you. Members of the public who have registered to speak will be recognized at the proper time. Any votes taken will require roll call votes. The clerk will call your name and unmute you for you to give your vote. No commentary will be allowed outside an A or N A vote. If you have any questions during any of the updates, please adjust your questions to the city manager and he will delegate staff on the call. To answer questions he cannot. This time I call the regular meeting to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Hughesman.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank.
Present.
Councilmember Madera.
Present.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Present.
Councilmember Hurst.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Mister Mayor Yavacor.
Thank you. Sounds like everybody is present and no need to have a motion to excuse those absence. Next on the agenda is citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication. Is the time on our agenda for the public to address council and business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters. That are before or may become before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, council must wait until administrative council business in order to take action in response to citizen communication. The city required advanced registration in order to participate in citizen communication. For this meeting, if you are currently in this meeting to speak during citizen communication. Please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you so you may begin. If you do not respond or are disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. We have one individual who has signed up to speak. That is Christie Douglas. Will the city clerk please unmute her?
Mister Mayor, it looks like Chrissy Douglas has not joined this meeting at this time.
Very well. Members of the public were also able to submit comments online and by mail. No written comments were received by the deadline. If anyone wishes to speak at a future council meeting, please check the meeting agenda and city website for information on how to register. Or submit written comments. This time we'll move on to the city's response on the COVID crisis, COVID nineteen crisis update. Will Deputy City Manager McRim please provide an update on the city's overall response to the COVID nineteen crisis?
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. As we've done the last few meetings, I have some initial introductory comments. And then Chief Nichols, Deputy City Manager Smith, Deputy City Manager Tinklinburg will have updates. In addition tonight, right after my comments, City Attorney Sheasley. Is going to provide some updated information about the lay of the land from a regulatory standpoint. There are conflicting. Requirements and it's a bit of a tricky regulatory framework to navigate and Mister Seasley. Has some good information to share with you tonight. From my perspective. My focus tonight was to talk about reactivating aspects of city government that have been suspended since the crisis hit and since. We shut down city facilities to the public back on March twelfth. However, two bits of information came to light today that I think are going to impact our ability to reactivate suspended. Aspects of city operations. The first is the CDC has issued new. Projections on numbers of cases nationally and they are now predicting that by June first, we could see as many as two hundred thousand cases a day. Across the United States. Additionally, there was some information published today in the New York Times indicating that. States that are less restrictive are seeing a higher number of cases than states that are more restrictive. That's different than what we were hearing just Thursday from Dr. Douglas from Tri County Health. It seems to me both those factors are going to impact what happens this week with Tri County Health. Regardless, we are focused on reactivating those aspects of city government that are currently suspended. When public health agencies tell us that we can. With the understanding and belief that we can do it safely. Some key things in that regard that I can share with you. We may have shared this a couple of weeks ago, but we do have a requirement to hold some trials in the month of May. There are state laws that entitled defendants to speedy trials and that's going to require that we make the courtroom ready. To safely hold trials in the month of May. Related to that, the judge has prepared. A limited docket to begin in June. Again, that's very much dependent on the future state of public health orders and whether. We will be able to do that and be able to do it safely. As I talked with managers. Around the metro area, they're all in a similar situation. It's courts that seems to be our biggest pressure point right now. So many of us like Commerce City are focused on how we can, at least on a limited basis, reactivate our. Municipal court. We are making preparations to open. City Hall and the MSC to the public again, at least on a limited basis to offer limited public service counter. Our public counter service. The chief thing. And both municipal services center and city hall that we aren't doing currently is serving people in person. Folks that. Need to speak with a person, a city employee in person, aren't currently able to do that. As you know, we've converted a number of our operations to be able to function in a remote fashion with many employees working remotely. As we work through those issues to be able to allow. In-person service on a limited basis. If you become aware of somebody who's in need. Of in-person service from city government whose needs can't be met through our various remote methods of providing service. Let me know and we will reach out to that person and find a way. To meet their needs until they're able to come back into city hall in person or into the municipal services center in person. We currently do not have a timeline for opening the city's rec centers. Activity in the rec centers is so impacted by social distancing regulations. We are working through scenarios to determine how we would do that and is it feasible? We're not at a point yet where we know that we can do that safely and do it in a feasible way, but that's work that is ongoing. I believe that reopening our rec centers will be one of the last things we're able to do as city government as we start to. Come through the end of this COVID nineteen crisis. In two weeks, I intend to share with you some initial budget recommendations. We're constantly evaluating revenue coming into the city and related to that. We've been busy determining how to adjust the expense side of our budget for twenty twenty. I will be back to you on May eighteenth with some high level recommendations. Not only on on budget cuts, but some ideas on where we may be able to backfill lost revenues. One thing I can tell you for certain, we are not doing across the board cuts. That will not be my recommendation. The cuts are very strategic. Aimed at maintaining the highest levels of service possible in the community while at the same time recognizing. But our revenue is going to take a pretty serious hit. Revenue projections are still tough to come by. We are still operating. On a range of revenue reductions somewhere between eleven and twenty-four million. That's still the best information we have. You'll hear from me in two weeks on the eighteenth, the best estimate of. Revenue losses that we can provide at that time, but it gets better all of the time. April tax remittances aren't due until the second week of June, so that's when our information on the revenue side. Will be will be much better than it is currently. So again, I'll share some overall strategies. It'll also be an incremental approach. We're working on. Sort of worst case scenario, but we'll also have some things we can do initially to start responding. To reduce revenues without necessarily implementing all budget reduction measures immediately. So that's. That's an important aspect of our plan to have a bit of a phased approach so that we can add. And make reductions as necessary throughout the rest of the year. I'll also be sending information to city council this week about event cancellations deeper into the summer season. It's although there are no prohibitions on public gatherings. That we've seen past the end of this month, it seems pretty clear that there will be limitations on group gatherings. Through the summer months. I even believe it's going to be very difficult for public schools to start in normal operations. In mid-August, so we'll be sending you some information about those event cancellations. That are really being forced by our inability to hold events where people can gather in groups within our community. Those are the key updates I have tonight. After you hear the updates from the other folks, happy to answer any questions. About any of the things that we're doing that are COVID nineteen related, but I think next on the list tonight is City Attorney Robert Cheasley.
Thank you, Mister McRim. We thought it would be helpful tonight to give counsel something of an overview of. And the and the public viewing, an overview of public health in Colorado and those authorities, given the number of orders that we see coming from. The state and local agencies and then run over kind of what are the standards that are applicable in Commerce City right now. Colorado essentially has a two-tier system that addresses public health in the context of an emergency. The legislature delegated those responsibilities to the executive branch and then to local public health agencies. Pursuant to the Colorado Disaster Emergency Act and the Colorado Public Health Law. Each of them operates through different orders and regulations that have the force and effect of law. You see these coming from the governor's office as the safer at home order that issued last week. And then the stay at home order that issued towards the end of March. And several dozen other executive orders that have issued from the governor's office. As well as orders coming from the Colorado Department of Health and the Environment. And emergency rulemaking from a number of state agencies to accommodate the emergency. I'm aware there's been at least one challenge in federal court to the constitutionality of the stay at home order when it was issued and that was not successful. For a number of reasons, I don't, I've not fully reviewed. That's at the state level. At the local level, Colorado is organized to have local public health agencies which are either a county department. Or a regional entity that's created by agreement of several counties. In Commerce City. Our county has agreed to join the Tri-County Health Department, which consists of Adams, Arapahoe and Douglas Counties. Those boards of health are generally appointed by elected commissioners and by of the the counties that create them. And so those public health agencies also have the ability to issue orders that are binding. The question then is what role does the city play? The city is not itself a public health agency. We do not have a public health agency. There. Possibility to create one in some way, but I'm not aware of any other than cities and counties that have them. Cities can be called upon to enforce those public health orders. But most importantly, the city retains its general police power and its funding abilities. While those aren't public health orders, they can be used to mitigate the impacts of the emergency in a local jurisdiction. For purely local matters. For example, you've seen emergency or I'm sorry, emergency powers ordinances. That give the city manager broader authority in some cities. Boulder has a very extensive one. And that's been used to issue broader directives for that community. The city of Wheat Ridge and a number of others have adopted their own local mask or face covering ordinances recently. Commerce City, for its part, has an emergency operations plan, which is more of an administrative procedures standard that's in our ordinances. And the council has chosen to respond to the crisis at this point by establishing a million dollars in community relief programs using city funding. So within the city within that public health structure, even though we're a home rule city, we're essentially subject to the more restrictive. Of those standards to the extent that you can comply with with both. We tend to look at the state standard primarily and then the more restrictive standard, if you can still manage to comply with the state standard. So that is that is how public work health is generally governed. Currently, as everyone knows, we're under a state of emergency that was declared on March tenth pursuant to the Disaster Emergency Act. That activated the emergency response plans and opened a chance to get federal aid. The president approved a request for a major disaster declaration. At the end of March, the city has also declared a disaster emergency pursuant to state law and our emergency operations plan. Primarily an administrative act allowing for recovery of funds from various reimbursement sources. As part of those emergency, dealing with that emergency, the. The city became under a number of diverse orders over time, and I'm not going to go over the history of those and just talk about where we are now. Which is right now, we're under a very diverse number of orders. The rule of thumb is generally the most restrictive would apply. And so in summary, the those are Tri-County Health's current April twenty-fifth. Order, which was simply an adoption of the governor's stay at home order. That was existing in March and continued into April and expired for the rest of the state and Douglas County. Last week and was replaced by the safer at home concept. That condition is likely to continue through May eighth unless Tri-County chooses to extend that stay at home provision. Or adopt something different, but still more restrictive than the safer at home order. On May ninth, it's likely that the city of Tri-County does nothing would be under the safer at home concept that I'll get into. Even though we are not Tri-County extended the stay at home order, there are some parts of the safer at home order. That would apply in Adams County and in Commerce City right now. Because they tend to be more restrictive than the stay at home order and more are more. Prescriptive in some manners with regard to protecting vulnerable individuals, which is now a defined term. And their household members restrictions on people who have tested positive or who have symptoms. Certain advisements about wearing face coverings, the school closure component of the safer at home order. Then the last thing we're we're under right now, like I said, there are dozens of executive orders and other rulings out there that are not all wrapped into the safer at home order. Or the stay at home order. Those include mandates regarding the wearing of masks or personal protective equipment recommendations. For employees in certain circumstances. There was an order issued last week that allows non-essential surgeries to proceed. And then there are a number of other measures that have been issued. To provide relief and to accommodate the emergency like we see about regulating. The procedures for evictions and foreclosures, extensions of filings related to taxes and. Things like that. And so. Why did Tri-County extend the public health order? According to their April twenty-fifth order, they felt that there was an ongoing high level of COVID nineteen cases. Occurring in Adams and Arapahoe Counties, but not in Douglas Counties that. The stay at home needed to be extended to preserve the medical system and public health. That was their explanation for that. We understand they're reevaluating that this week and they're reevaluating or evaluating the potential for a mask order. In various communities, the parameters of which we have not yet seen. So stay at home means residents are required to stay at home unless they need to go outside to conduct necessary activities. And when they do so, when that's a defined term in the order, when they do so, they're required to comply with social distancing standards. Social gatherings are essentially prohibited. Self-isolation is required if you have symptoms of COVID nineteen. And high-risk individuals are encouraged to stay home. What we see in the safer at home order, which will likely be in place here later in the week. Is that if you're, they don't use the high-term, high-risk individual anymore. They use the term of vulnerable individual. And those people are offered more protections for employee in their employment. And have much stronger encouragement to stay at home. There's also encouragement for accommodating those people's household members. And other persons that have childcare responsibilities. So this development of how does the state open while protecting certain categories of the population. Is to be found in the safer at home order. Under the stay at home order, only defined critical businesses are allowed to open if they follow social distancing and sanitation protocols and some other limits. Even some of those businesses, as we know, like restaurants or marijuana dispensaries can operate only under certain standards. Other businesses generally must close, except for in-person work required to conduct minimum basic operations. The safer at home order moves towards reducing those restrictions in a phased basis. It is really an incremental shift as explained by the the governor and the state agencies targeting a ten percent decrease. In the type of distancing that they were previously trying to achieve. They're trying to target about a sixty-five percent social distancing. Practice right now under safer at home. And what safer at home did is over the last. Starting on May one, starting immediately, some businesses could open on May one, others could open on May fourth, a few more could open on May eighth. I may have is not a thing. It's just May, May fourth. As the businesses were ramping up to meet the protocols. Even though businesses are allowed to open more broadly, their practices are still limited and then there are protocols. That have to be followed for the businesses to open. And so hopefully Commerce City businesses are anticipating this and looking at these protocols as a. Way to be ready to reopen. Tri-County indicated. Last week that if the safer at home order is implemented in Adams County, likely they would not. Renew this phasing concept that remains to be seen, but it's likely that every business could reopen. So we're going to be paying special attention to that. The safer at home order. Suspends school through the remainder of the school year for in-person learning. There is a requirement that vulnerable individuals stay home except for conducting and performing those necessary activities that are defined. That definition, as I mentioned, is expanded. And employers really are encouraged to look at that and look at accommodations to be made for those employees and what what standards they can apply to those types of employees. The safer at home order also updates concepts of discrimination and. Leave requirements related to COVID nineteen and the Colorado Civil Rights Division and C P H E, I believe, are issuing emergency rulemaking regarding those matters. As of about five thirty, they had not done so that I could find. So we're still waiting to see what type of impact those have on. Our employees and what guidance we can offer businesses here. Continues to be that sick, sick individuals are people positive for COVID nineteen, I have to stay at home. Masking under the safer at home concept that we may see next week is advisory under the state order. Tri-County Public Health may do a separate order regarding masks. Whether that is a voluntary option for cities to opt into for businesses to implement or a mandatory process, we don't know. The gathering and social limitations and travel limitations are relaxed under safer at home. People are encouraged still to limit social interaction to stay within their counties and to not drop or the counties of residence or employment. And not go more than ten miles for recreation. Gatherings of ten or more people in public or private places remain prohibited through the end of the month. And then how that expands over the summer has yet to be seen. All the same critical businesses and critical government, government functions that could previously operate under stay at home can continue to operate. Considering they follow social distancing and cleaning and other protocols, but with some additional screening requirements and more detailed protocols for. Maintaining safety in those businesses. Some of the businesses stay closed like gyms, restaurants, even though they can do curbside. And delivery, coffee shops and bars, the same thing, theaters remain closed. But that phased in period that started immediately last Monday and ended today. Allowed other non-critical retail to open in a phased manner following those distancing and cleaning protocols. That even went so far as to allow real estate showings and other types of field services and personal services. Like salons and barbers and massage parlors. And dog grooming, body art, that sort of thing. Any business that happens to be watching and is is looking for information. The Department of Public Health and Environment's website has detailed guidance on how you can prepare your business to open under these standards. The last item I wanted to note is the safer at home order allows individual counties, but not. Cities to seek exemptions from the state based on certain criteria that involve having plans for responding to the crisis. And that is, that is an extremely high level overview of a lot of material. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if Mr. McRim wanted me to do that now or or at the end, but I'll be available throughout the night. But otherwise, I believe Chief Nichols was going to continue. The update at this point.
Good evening, council members and mayor. From the Emergency Operations Center, primarily now that the incident has been relatively stable and we've got relatively good guidance with regard to the. Public health orders and the anticipated changes. Our focus has been on working with the. The new normal task force that's been working towards the reopening of some government facilities. Primarily the civic center and the MSC as the city manager alluded to a little bit earlier. We're focused on providing some limited services under the guidelines of our. Public health order governing agencies and as you can imagine, that has been a little bit difficult given the timeliness of these. And how those orders are rolled out as the city attorney mentioned, they require eyes to be on those things to make sure that. We how they impact operations and so that we can also be certain that we are under compliance. Some of the things that we're taking a look at that are probably going to be limited in services is field facility redesign. We've ordered quite a bunch of equipment. Again, as the city manager mentioned, we believe the first portion that's going to open up is. Going to be courts and we want to make sure we do our part to keep people safe while they're in that environment. So we're taking a look at. Some facility redesigns to keep crowds from gathering and a bunch of other things to make sure that when people are attending court. That they are doing so safely to not only them, but to staff as well. In addition to that, we're also working through a variety of options that are designed to increase the customer experience while they're inside the civic center. Appointment-based solutions so that we can minimize crowds and lines in the building. In addition, we're also moving forward with a an e-ticket solution with the courts opening up that. Again, you'll hear more later from D C M Smith regarding those efforts that we're taking a look at. The Emergency Operations Center is also continuing to participate in federal, state and regional efforts to share information. And quite frankly, to look at those solutions that are designed to keep us open effectively and keep everyone safe. Not only customers, but staff as well. We want to make sure that we provide an efficient service level. While we get the people's business conducted while they're in our facilities that's safely designed for everybody. And again, as I mentioned, our biggest challenge today is the litany of orders that come out that get changed. And the interpretation of those orders so that again, we can make sure what we're doing is correct to keep everybody safe. From the P D standpoint, our staff is holding steady. As the weather continues to warm, we anticipate an uptick in in crime. It's only natural. It isn't anything that's directly related to COVID nineteen. It is that a seasonal influence on crime that we come to expect. Our calls for service are starting to, the decrease is starting to get a little bit smaller. I think last time we had a meeting, I reported that we were about six percent below our normal level of calls for service. That has dropped to about four percent. So we are getting ready to be within normal range here relatively shortly. With the anticipation of court opening on a limited basis, we're planning on slowly increasing our enforcement efforts. Primarily as they relate to traffic violations. If you saw over the last few weeks, we're starting to get some. Traffic assessment data so that I can tell you that our speeds are starting to increase on the roadway and so. We've developing some plans that will allow us to address those issues before we start to have some significant. Traffic issues on our roadways. And on that note, I don't have anything further and I'll be around if there are questions that come up later, but I believe D C M Smith is. Going to take the stage next. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Uh update from the Internal Services Department. Uh I'll start with the community relations. Um as you recall, we have one P I O staffing the um. Twenty-four seven support for on-call weekend and and regular P I O duties in addition to supporting the E O C. Um and we send daily reports uh from there to the city council um. Both from the state and the federal government. We hope those revised reports are meeting your needs. And uh the Tri County update is also coming through our communications folks. Um some updates on our webpage and that activity. Um as you know, we created a webpage for the business and nonprofit. Recovery and support grants. Uh the page was promoted through press release, website, news items, social media. And we directly emailed eight hundred and eighty-seven businesses. We made targeted calls and emails to businesses and nonprofits encouraging them to evaluate uh our grant programs. That those program application periods closed this evening at five o'clock and I can report for you that. On the business side, we received a total of fifty-six uh business applications through the grant program. Forty-nine of those were in English, seven in Spanish. On the nonprofit side, we received twenty-one applications. All of those were done in English. We still have a high level of internet traffic on our webpages, particularly the COVID page. Um has had a thousand fifty-eight views in the last two weeks. Um and Mr. Sheasley mentioned a variety of business resources that are available on C D P H E's webpage. And I will tell you, communications has created many of those resources available both in English and in Spanish. And they're available on our business webpage as well. Um our top three Facebook posts over the last um two-week period. Uh one of which reached forty-six thousand people. That's the most um we've ever had review of Facebook posts. And that was about our. Closure of Paradise Island for the summer season as a result of COVID nineteen. Uh the second highest one was about sixty-five hundred reviews and that was our free yard waste event on May sixteenth. Our uh staff liaison who supports boards and commissions uh has been providing weekly updates via email. Uh to all of our boards and commissions and has scheduled in-person phone check-in calls with our senior and youth commission. Uh commissioners. Moving to the finance department, uh still processing about a hundred checks per week through our accounts payable process. Um staff has completed four of the four required I C S training classes. I believe I talked to you about those last time. They're required for FEMA reimbursement. Across the entire organization. Our annual audit with the state of Colorado began on April twentieth with I Bailey. Uh who is our vendor for completing that work and we hope to have the audit completed by May eighth. We have at eighty-five active audits in process. Those are being handled all remotely. Seventeen of those audits have had to be postponed due to COVID nineteen. And we have five past due unpaid audit assessments. Last time we had seven, two of those have been. Resolved and paid uh since we last talked. As uh Brian mentioned, April returns for the month of April will not be in until June tenth, and that's a result of. Uh the delay in that reporting, one and two, the city granting a thirty to sixty-day grace period to businesses. Um during this COVID nineteen crisis. Uh moving on to our uh information technology department. Um in the last two weeks, they've processed another hundred and one uh service desk tickets. Uh year-to-date, it's over a thousand of those that they've worked on. Uh they also are providing daily support onsite for the E O C operation. And a big portion of their time has consisted of setting up. Communications for Zoom meetings such as the city council meeting. Um we have also scheduled Q C F meetings. Um and oil and gas webinar, planning commission. Um and a cultural council meeting, all those very similar to council meetings have to be posted to the public. Time for people to register, et cetera. So they're very time-consuming uh and and do require quite a bit of staff time to s- set those processes up and put them in place. Um we are working to purchase, uh as was mentioned, the uh queuing software. Uh for scheduling the public when we reopen. We've seen a number of entities uh had a great deal of success with this software. And hardware that allows us to schedule people to come in. And then notify them via text message when they're ready for their appointment to come into the building. Um and this is a key factor with our um biometric screening that's taking place to enter the facility with all employees. Assuming that gets extended um when we open the counter for anyone coming into our buildings. And we don't want to create a line outside the facilities where people are gathering together. And this technology is really going to help us. Um resolve some of those issues. The other project that has really taken off uh as a result of some new availability from the vendor is our e-ticketing. Uh software project, which council was very supportive of in the budget process. Um I T, the police department and courts are back uh working on that project extensively. In hopes of eliminating paperwork through that process, which obviously. Uh COVID can be spread on, so it's a good time to be eliminating some of those paperwork processes. The I T department's doing all this with uh four vacancies across uh their work group. Um and so they're they're doing that on a short staff. We appreciate everybody's efforts. Moving to H R, uh we have three hundred and seventy-one actual positions out of four hundred and one budgeted full-time positions. We have two hundred and eighty-one variable hour employees. Um through pay period uh pay period nine, we had two hundred and fifty-seven employees on COVID leave. We also had to revise, as Robert mentioned, the number of policies during this last two weeks. There were a lot of changes with with executive orders that were issued, new public health orders. Every time that that happens, um we have to adjust our policies internally. So some of those council received, I know. Um the symptom screening policy that we created. Uh the P P E policy, which relates to masks and glove wearing when in our facilities and we're providing services. To customers or we're within six feet of each other in our workplace space. In addition, the city manager extended the COVID COVID nineteen administrative leave policy through May the eighth in alignment with the stay-at-home order. We made a conditional job offer um a couple of weeks ago to a very strong candidate for the municipal court supervisor position. And of course, as you might imagine, this is a a difficult time to be thinking about changing organizations. Uh so we were fairly um patient and worked with this individual who now has accepted that offer. And plans to join our team uh in the next week or so. Uh the date will be determined in the next uh couple of days, but uh. She's excited to to join our team and is coming to us from the district courts uh up in Adams County. Has a great deal of experience and we're very excited to have her join the organization. Um the benefits team is working with H R to review a benefit survey that was done and contemplate whether or not. Um we renew our current benefit plans or we go out to market. Um certainly. Uh going out to market for benefits in in this environment would certainly be difficult and taxing on the organization to try to. Accomplish in a virtual setting. Uh so we're evaluating that uh now with our employees. Uh in the clerk's office, we have received thirty-one court requests since our last city council meeting. Uh and two licensing applications. So far this year, the clerk's office has issued one hundred and fifty-seven licenses. That concludes my report and I would now turn it over to Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As mentioned, the city staff continued the FEMA training to make sure that uh we can get our employees qualified. And then uh also they've been working on twenty-twenty budget reductions as well as trying to prepare for the twenty-twenty-one budget. Adams County has formed a task force that they're calling Maintaining Community Health and Economic Prosperity. And that has five subcommittees. Those committees, subcommittees uh started meeting last week and um are meeting again this week. Uh with the whole intent to make recommendations on the following areas. Uh public venues and gatherings. Those would be like open air markets, farmers' markets, uh concerts, sporting events, that type of thing. Uh businesses which uh you know covers the whole gamut of businesses as well as extending to libraries and courts and hospitality. And then uh one on protecting highly vulnerable populations, people in nursing homes, um. People who may be newly evicted or leaving incarceration, that type of thing. As well as uh preparing uh for the reduction of con uh of restrictions. Uh for businesses and general public. And then also uh one on preparing for vaccinations. And then uh to get all of it, get that information out to the public, there's a communication strategy subcommittee. As well as one that will be uh monitoring compliance and evaluation. To move on to eventual no restrictions. Uh and again, the idea is to present uh recommendations for all the elected officials. Um I've joined the one on the businesses and uh. Predominantly, the recommendation at this point is to maintain consistency with the state. Statewide health orders. And so uh again, trying to make it as uh simple as possible for businesses. Uh by not issuing stuff that's contradictory to what the state has issued. In terms of our departments, uh the Community Development Department, uh again, I'm just going to skim some of the highlights. They've been reviewing uh. Basically. Development applications and uh one of those that was under consideration was Legato. Uh Legato uh west of E four seventy and east of E four seventy. And uh Legato East application has been withdrawn. Uh they're rethinking that whole approach on on that side. Uh staff is still working on design guidelines for Legato West. As well as meeting with E four seventy authority regarding uh a preliminary design for an interchange at eighty-eighth Avenue. And then uh Mile High Greyhound Park, the property was posted and uh. That deadline uh is tomorrow uh and uh. Staff continues to work with Del West on uh design. But we have uh preliminary word anyway that they will be submitting a request for an extension and that's based on. Uh Wells Fargo working with uh Chaffa. And uh the concern by Chaffa is that uh this is not a good environment for issuing bonds. And so they're looking at it requesting an ex- extension to be able to uh accommodate a better market environment. Um as mentioned, we have an oil and gas virtual town hall meeting coming up on May seventh. And then to give you a perspective, pardon me, the uh building construction trades have continued strongly in Commerce City. Uh last year, uh well, I'll tell you first about building inspections. There were uh one thousand six hundred and fourteen building inspections conducted in April. Um most of that was on new construction. We have just started doing the uh remote video inspection. Uh so that process just got set up and and proceeding. Meanwhile, uh in terms of the number of of single-family development units that are under review, last year it was two thousand seven hundred. This year, same period of time, three thousand seven hundred. So a thousand increase over last year. In terms of uh multifamily, last year it was two hundred and eighty-seven. This year it's one thousand and ten. So again, uh. Basically tripled uh in terms of amount of uh units that are under consideration. And the same thing is true for non-residential. Last year it was uh one thousand or one million six hundred thousand of square feet. This year it's two million five hundred thousand square feet. So uh interest continues strong in in terms of development out in the community. There is a uh planning commission meeting scheduled for the twelfth and that's uh for the fire district uh. A rezoning that needs to happen for one of their facilities. Um we took in eight land use applications in April uh compared to ten last year in April. Uh and that's, this is after uh starting up the process partly through the month to be able to take them remotely. Um in terms of uh neighborhood services, they're actively working on uh C R Ms. And then uh C D B G and housing, uh they're working on setting up a program for consideration that would uh provide mortgage and. Housing assistance uh that would theoretically be able to support one hundred Commerce City families. And then uh for housing, they are are doing a walkthrough of the property for demolition. That uh was uh purchased next to Pine Crest uh Apartments. Parks, Recreation and Golf uh continue working on a reopening strategy for the recreation centers and and the programs. Um summer programs, you know, some are going to have to be canceled. Some may be able to be held, but there's going to have to be a. Radically different format for those, again, to maintain safety for the public as well as for employees. They continue to make uh well calls for the uh active adults and uh reportedly uh most are doing very well. Um the programs and uh trips uh events for active adults have been canceled through the end of June at this point. And then uh they are also working with C B G and uh the Audio Information Network to promote programs for. Uh seniors with uh audio accessibility devices in their homes. Most of the uh active adults uh have expressed that they don't feel safe in public. Uh even though they're doing well at home, they don't feel safe going out. And so uh again, staff is uh working on ways. To connect and provide opportunities for socialization and recreation for them. And then uh youth teen, they're retraining exist- existing staff to be able to work in uh different program areas the the summer. And then uh Buffalo Buffalo Run Golf Course uh that opened on April twenty-seven with safety procedures in place. Um those include things like uh walking only for for golfers, no carts. Uh restrooms are sanitized regularly, dining room and patio are closed to seating. And uh just have to-go service available for food. So those type of things uh have uh hopefully kept the golfers uh safe and uh they reportedly are happy. A thousand. One uh a thousand and three golfers played. And so uh uh hopefully that can continue sa- in a safe manner. In Public Works, um seventy-second Colorado, uh there the paving is weather-dependent, but hopefully should be done towards the end of this month. Uh eighty-eighth Avenue, I think I reported last time that uh they're examining the widening versus the flyover. Uh at the railroad tracks and uh canal. Uh Vazquez, uh C dot uh had a feedback session with staff uh on the thirtieth of April. And uh they're preparing a a report that we'll be able to take to you uh sometime here in the near future regarding their uh uh desired. Or uh preferred outcomes. Um hundred and fourth traffic signals, that's uh proceeding. Uh unfortunately, we're held up by uh controller cabinet uh equipment. And then the twenty-twenty pavement management and flatwork, uh the bid opening is on the sixth, so two days from now. And uh that'll be on the agenda for city council on the eighteenth to uh award the contract. And then uh other related development items, one hundred and twelfth Avenue that chambers to parkside. The contractor had wanted to close down one hundred and twelfth completely, but uh. Was reminded that they have to keep at least one lane open. But the uh full closure into the greens at Buffalo Run will be in place for another two weeks. But the full closure into the greens at Buffalo Run will be in place for another two weeks. And then afterwards residents will be able to go eastbound on Hundred and Twelfth Avenue. And westbound traffic will have to continue using one hundred and thirteenth Avenue for several more weeks. So that's a quick thumbnail sketch of hundreds of items that we had, but wanted to just give you a quick highlight. I'll turn it back over to City Manager McRoom.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I know it's a lot of information for us to share. Happy to answer questions you might have about the information that we've provided. We could also answer questions later on during administrative council business if that would be easier.
Councilman Nurse, do you have a question?
Yeah, first of all, thanks, guys. That's thanks for the in-depth report. I know. But the ever-changing requirements and executive orders and things like that coming out, it's tough to balance trying to get everything right. And make sure everybody's safe and obviously protect liabilities and such. So so good job with the adapting and and I understand your pains, trust me. But Robert, I did have one question that I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't ask. So it's basically basic representative government has a checks and balances system. Can we define what that is for our current situation?
Respectfully, that may be a little bit outside of the scope of what I can do, but I will tell you. The the structure of the public health laws was created by the legislature that was elected. Across the state of Colorado and signed by the elected governor of the state of Colorado. And local public health agencies officials are appointed by elected officials themselves. And so what was described in the court order that I reviewed regarding the challenge to the stay at home order. Was they indicated the delegation concept that all government functions to some extent are delegated. And the check on that delegation is through voters ultimately and then through court systems, I would expect. So I expect you see this issue to play out continually through the electoral process and possibly in the court system. I I hope that answers your question. I think that's the best I can do on that.
No, I appreciate, I definitely appreciate that. I mean, just clearly defining that there's no real time balance or checks and balance system that there is right now. Thank you.
Any other questions for the staff while we're on this subject? Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Would like to thank all the staff for their comprehensive update. I know that it's very important for the council to hear what's going on as well as for our residents and business owners as well. So thank you for the time you put into those updates. Next on the schedule is the oil and gas monthly update. Will Community Development Director Jason Rogers please provide the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Dylan, if you can bring up the PowerPoint presentation, that would be great. So, once again, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's presentation will cover an update on the oil and gas permanent application activity within the city. In particular, we do have a call out in regards to the Condor site. We will also talk about activity on applications with at the state level, our land development code update as it relates to oil and gas. A Suncor update, a discussion around Suncor settlement funds and potential opportunities. A request for council support and other environmental updates. Next slide, please. So thank you once again, Dylan. As you're all aware, eight applications have been submitted to the city. Only seven have been deemed complete and are currently being processed. The only site, the Condor site, is the only application that has not been deemed complete to undergo review by the city. There is an update once again later in this presentation. Staff is continuing to review the seven permits that are on file, which were submitted by extraction of oil and gas. I think it is clear to note that destruction has not submitted its conditional use permit for the pipeline applications. Once again, to reiterate that no oil and gas permit that we have of the seven that's being reviewed can be approved until such time. A conditional use permit for the pipeline has been submitted and final action by city council has been taken on that. In regards to the this slide that you have before you, this simply is a map of the applications that we have being complete. We do still have our interactive map still working properly and functionally on our oil and gas webpage for the general public to go in, to dive in, get more information. As it relates to each site, next slide, please, Dylan. Once again, just a general review schedule of the applications that we have had on file and where they stand. Next slide, please. With regards to the current spacing applications, next slide, Dylan. The Form Two application slide, here you have obviously, once again, information at the state level. And the next slide, which is the current Form Two A applications. There has been no activity as it relates. To those surface spacing Form Two or Form Two applications to report out on. Next slide, please. Once again, this is just a general map of C O G C C activity within the municipal boundaries for Commerce City. Next slide. General updates. So I want to take a moment to kind of share with you in regards to the L D C update. Staff has constructed stakeholder meetings with both the home builders and the industry representatives in the month of April. In regards to updates that information that we received that those meetings were in regards to technical details as it relates to certain proposed language. Measurements and reverse setbacks as it relates from oil and gas well pads to residential home sites. Also clarification into various verbiage on air quality monitoring and things of the sort. This week, the city will be conducting a virtual town hall meeting on May seventh, as Roger alluded to earlier. You have probably noticed that as of this past weekend, the link to the Zoom meeting for signup were not active. This is typical given the limited resources that the necessary links are typically set out a couple of days before the meeting. That being said, I would like to note that the links are now active and we are working with our community relations team. In being able to push out social media information to make sure that residents and our corporate citizens are aware. As part of this virtual town hall meeting, there will be a brief overview presentation of the public draft. By a panel of myself, Dominic Martinelli, Matt Sir, who has been outside legal counsel. To address questions and comments that may come from the community as it stands today. When we last checked, we had four pre-submitted comments for this virtual town hall meeting on Thursday. We were also able to confirm today that the contract we have for live interpretation services for our Spanish speaking population. Will be available to support the virtual town hall meeting and that will also be pushed out by our community relations team. In regards to the C O G C. Missions ruled, missions rulemaking timeline. Last week, the C O G C provided entities that had declared party status with an updated timeline on the process. As you will see within the schedule, even though hearings are not anticipated to conclude until September tenth. The city's current timeline for our land development code update and the C O G C's timeline for the rulemaking. Rulemaking changes are relatively aligned in order for us to provide a formal stance. Next slide, Dylan, please. Being a little bit more specific to the land development code updates, I wanted to re-highlight the remaining schedule for city council. Obviously, if needed, the dates can shift accordingly as we continue to navigate this crisis. We did note that a study session would need to be held with city council. However, staff is working obviously with the city manager's office and obviously community relations. Any event an alternative solution is needed to bring the item forward for discussion and feedback by council. Dylan, next slide, please, thank you. In regards to this slide, I did want to take a moment to discuss a request for council support. To be a signatory on a comment letter to the C O G C C. Which is requesting additional public water supply protections. The letter was provided as part of your packet tonight. The Water and Sanitation District, obviously for South Adams County and Brighton have joined the signatories to the letter. And that letter argues that the definition is not broad enough in to include some shallow groundwater wells that serve the public water supply. And so in short, there are unintended gaps in protection to some drinking water systems. Supporting this definition change at the C O G C level would be consistent with our proposed draft regulations. Just as a reminder, our ordinance proposes an increase in the prohibition on oil and gas production sites within one thousand feet of public supply wells. Which is up from five hundred feet. Within our ordinance. Now, just to kind of generally share with you all how we've defined public water supply well shall mean a well or a system wells that provides water. By piping or other constructed conveyances for human consumption to at least fifteen service connections. Or serves an average of at least twenty five people for at least sixty each, sixty days each year. Once again, how the proposed letter is positioning its concerns and issues aligns with what we have proposed at the local level. Dylan, next slide, please. So as I broached earlier, we had a specific conversation about Condor to share with you all tonight. While there has been no substantial activity on the Condor application as of itself. With staff to deem the application complete, the property owner and extraction oil and gas have been working behind the scene. And have shared information on their progress or quite frankly, really the lack thereof. Staff was informed over the past weekend to have that negotiations between extraction on the gas have stalled. To move the well pad to the east location across E four seven. Moreover, as once again, Mr. Kingleberg alluded to earlier. Last week, the city was informed that the concept schematic that identified the oil and gas well pad was requested to be withdrawn by the applicant. Now, the applicant is in, and once again, extraction are still moving forward, but once it is not moving at a pace. And what we've been informed is that the approved location on the west side is one that they are further examining. And maybe updating their oil and gas permit application to adjust for potentially a new location within what you see on the identified site plan. In track N or in and around where that blue box is. We have not seen any new location and or specific site plan. But we have been informed that there may be some shifts in changes that would require an amended or a new oil and gas permit application. The Legato P U D was approved by council on February sixth of this year, which does require any oil and gas use within that trap to be approved by a conditional use permit. Prior to us being able to approve any oil and gas permit. Once again, furthermore, a condition use permit will not only be required for the use, but also would be required for the pipeline itself. As information becomes more readily available, we will make sure to include any updates with respect to the Condor site accordingly, accordingly in our updates as we go forward. Suncor. So once again, this is our standing page slide to continue to bring awareness to C D P H E's webpage in regards to Suncor. Once again, this page includes updates on enforcement actions, live updates, air quality monitoring stations surrounding the facility. And access to other information on permits, complaints and questions. Suncor has also provided its monthly independent update, which covers a COVID nineteen response, an operational outlook. Activity with the refinery citizen advisory committee and community investment. That was also attached to your upload to your packet tonight as well. I will note that Suncor will be providing its next quarterly update in a virtual forum to council on June first of this year. Next slide, please. Suncor settlement funds, we have mentioned as part of the last oil and gas monthly update in March. Before April, that Suncor had reset settlement with C D P H E for past violation. The funds agreed to are in the amount of two point six million and to be used for environmental projects. What has been shared with us as our staff has been engaging is that they are, they are moving forward with a process of being a process of looking at. Supplemental environmental projects framework under C D P H E, which allows for local government and nonprofit organizations that have been considered to be an impacted community. As it relates to the summit to have the ability to submit future projects that would either have a rational nexus of impacts associated with the refinery. And obviously proposed methods to remediate those issues and impacts. And in the form of a request for application, a formal process application would have to be submitted for review and evaluation and ultimately a notification of selection. As I stated, our staff has been working to identify potential projects or a framework for what we need to think about and what could be a potential project. To submit for a future R F A and engaging C D P H E staff today and obviously going as in the past to understand the details of that process. Once a project is submitted, just kind of some technical information for you all. There will be an evaluation committee, formal evaluation committee that will be made up of one Suncor representative, one C D P H E representative. And potentially community leaders, representatives of the various impacted communities. Next slide, Dylan. Thank you. As part of this process, there will be a robust community engagement strategy that will be conducted by C D P H E. Which will inform of the priority geographic areas where projects should take place that will directly benefit those that have been impacted. The type of projects that can or could get preference through this evaluation process. The maximum dollar amount, once again, there's two point six. They may choose to spread out across a number or a select few projects depending on who submits. And obviously the justification submitted for those. And the various type of projects, water, air, solid waste and obviously hazardous waste are just a few to note, but not only just the ones. The process will be broken down into three phases, a May and June engagement, which will be speaking with local community leaders, staff and representatives to understand. What are the needs and the priorities of our community? A second phase of July and August to where there will be a community engagement that is conducted with the general public. We are still trying to understand what that community engagement process will entail, how that will look, how they will define certain conversations. As it relates to identified projects or just the framework of projects. So we are still trying to get more information in regards to that. And that by fall of twenty twenty, and what we've been tentatively told today is that by October second is when. City staff would have to be ready to submit a formal request for application to C D P H E. For their evaluation committee to be able to provide a notification of selection. C D P H E staff will be reaching out to council members from Ward One and Ward Two over the next two months. To understand and once again, during the community leader engagement stage. The big takeaway for staff and I think obviously for for council is that we are working on a process to develop recommendations. As it relates to projects and ultimately process in order for us to work with C D P H E and to engage our community as well. And ultimately, once again, project recommendations that will receive support from council. And it's our goal and hope to be able to bring at least an outline of that process with our next monthly update in June. And the last update is in regards to the EPA air toxins grant. Once again, at the March second oil and gas monthly update, staff noted partnering with the city and county of Denver, Adams County. And Tri-County Health on an EPA air toxins grant. This grant would allow for air monitoring around the refinery and other industrial uses in North Denver. and other industrial uses in North Denver, Commerce City, and unincorporated Adams County. The grant has been submitted, and we are expecting a notification of selection on July 1st, 2020. A robust community engagement would also be associated with this process and would occur to determine appropriate monitoring locations. And city staff would play, and obviously with council feedbacking and support and guidance would also play a role in how we engage our community on determining these locations once that determination has been made. With that, that ends my presentation, and I am available for any questions or comments that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Before I go to questions for council, I understand that Kristy Douglas has joined the meeting as she is still available in order to speak for her Citizen Communication, Mr. Gibson.
Yes, it looks like she is currently on the line still.
Great. Before we go to council for questions for staff, please give her her three minutes.
Ms. Douglas, you are allowed to talk.
Hi there. I did not expect this at all, so kind of took me off guard here. I don't even know where I put my notes now. First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm so sorry that I wasn't able to get in on time at the beginning of the meeting. So, I thank you for the opportunity to do remote testimony. I'd like to speak to you about the last meeting, and I would first of all like to thank Councilwoman Noble for bringing forth the possibility of a moratorium as a motion. And I would also like to thank all of those who voted in favor of that moratorium. I would like to remind those of you who voted no that in your position as an elected official, it is your duty first and foremost to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people who elected you. And by voting no to me, that tells me that your priority is to protect the interests of this industry rather than the, the people who live here. And I find that very disappointing. And I want you to be aware of that, and I'm not the only one who feels like this. There might be people who live in our communities, who do work in the industry, but they're looking at short-term benefits for themselves and not the long-term repercussions of what will happen when we roll out the red carpet to bring industrial operations into our neighborhoods. I think we have to look really long and hard at that. I know that the moratorium was short-term, and it was phenomenal. But to me, it was something for the citizens. And I really think you have to look long and hard at that. So, again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight remotely. And I would suggest maybe in the future that you consider offering remote testimony as a way for some people who have kids that need to be put to bed at an early time or the fact that they might be working during these hours to give them an opportunity to speak as well. So, it might be something that you would consider to continue for the, the future, even when this pandemic is over. So, thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Councilman Guardiola, you were first.
Thank you. I had a question for Jason. Do we know if some of that 2.6 million will go to the Swansea community? Since I know Suncor is on in Commerce City, but I know Denver always debates that it's in their neighborhood also. And if so, I just want to make sure that we're advocating for our city leaders and community leaders to be on that committee so we don't lose out from some of that funding.
Good count, good question, council member. No, it hasn't been determined at this point in time. I will say that now that you've made note of that, we'll keep that. We'll put that in our parking lot as we continue our conversations with CDPH as this process goes forward to make note that that is a, that is a, that is a location and a point of interest for, for our council.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas.
Yeah, Jason, I just had a question. I had the opportunity to write around Suncor this past week and curious who's responsible for the, the upkeep or the upkeep of the property along the outside area because we're not only faced with environmental issues surrounding that area, but in a part of the environment, there's a lot of trash, debris, that type of stuff as well. The upkeep is really poor. So, do you know who's responsible for that and what the city staff can do to make sure that looks, you know, it's in my ward and it just looks, the upkeep is really poor and slacking.
Yeah, there are a number of different entities. Obviously, as you know, that Suncor has a number of sub-entities that are obviously leasing and have access to the property and or individual properties in and around Suncor. So, what we can do is be proactive, go out there and try to identify some of those hotspots and the associated proprietors and engage with them about actively cleaning up their site or voluntarily cleaning up their site.
Okay, thank you. Yes, because if you can, you know, see if city staff can follow up with that, because like I said recently, this past week it's looked really bad. So, thanks, Jason.
Councilwoman Noble.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to endorse both council member Guardiola and Allen Thomas for their comments. And I do want to make a point about Suncor's report to us. The idea behind the Suncor report wasn't to inform the city council, but in fact, to inform the residents as well of what's occurring around the site. So, if I can just read from their report a bit. Nine exceedances related to air emissions, of which four were from the March 17th event. There were three FCC opacity, two flare indoor fuel gas hydrogen sulfide exceedances, two product on tank roof, one flare excess visible emissions, and one vapor combustion unit temperature exceedance. Also, one reportable spill on Suncor property. I will note, though, that in the first quarter of 2019, they had 197 exceedances. In the first quarter of 2020, there has been 33 exceedances. And they do note that they are glad they're improving but want to do more. I think a big concern for me is that the emissions, we know from lots of articles regarding COVID, are making the impact on residents who live in that area much more difficult because of the air pollution. So, this is something that we really, really need to be concerned about. I would love it if the council would be able to have some hand in appointing residents to the committee that will be formed as well. And regarding the town hall, the notification for the town hall went out on Wednesday of last week, and it gave a website, a web link for where you would go to sign up to participate in the Zoom meeting. So, we've seen five days go by where it wasn't possible for people. And I'm actually very concerned that we may have actually discouraged participation. I'm not sure that it should even go forward if we've been advertising about it since last Wednesday, and it wasn't functional until this evening. While it may be a 48-hour or 72-hour in advance notification, typically for city council or government events, I think it's, we're talking about the right thing to do, and that's for anyone on the spectrum to participate in this. So, I, I am, I'm actually not supportive of the town hall going forward on Thursday night because of the delay in the opportunity for people to sign up. I'm afraid that a lot of those people who may have seen that may have been discouraged and will not come back. So, we need to make it very clear if we do go forward that it's now a link that is operable. I set up a meeting on Zoom for the senior commission, and it was very easy to do. I did that last week. It is for May 14th. So, it's possible to do these things in advance. Also, it is not on the calendar for our government. The legislative calendar, it's nowhere on there, or I'm not sure what the rules are about that. But even as council members, theoretically, we didn't know this was happening until this evening. So, I think there's a lot of questions that I have about it. And my final comment is that I'm really disappointed that the conversation has broken down between Legato and Extraction. Although I didn't support the, the development project there, I was hopeful that they were, as they stated, going to move the 24 wells across the highway to the east side and away from the numerous residences that have been approved in that development project. So, I hope that the city can do something to make that happen because that's really a grave concern that is going to be surrounded by residents in close proximity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff regarding the oil and gas update or the Suncor update? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. The first resolution of the evening is Resolution 2020-32 An Amendment for the Purchase and Sell Agreement for the Honan Building. Does anyone on council have questions for staff regarding the resolution? Seeing no hands up for questions or comments regarding the resolution, no one registered to provide public comment, and no written comments were submitted. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2020-32. Councilwoman Noble.
I would make a motion except Mayor Hughesman, I actually wanted to get a response from Jason to my comments, and I believe that you cut short the discussion on the oil and gas update and the Suncor update. So, I would like to go back to Jason, if I may.
Mr. Rogers, do you have comments that you would like to address in regard to the questions posed by Councilwoman Noble?
If I may, Councilmember Noble, they seem more as statements of, of concerns or issues that you may have. I didn't necessarily understand where a question may be within that. Do you mind sharing that again with me?
Yes. Would you, when you do the Suncor update, publicly state what the issues are because it's not just for the residents, not just for the council, but also the residents? Number two, will you be encouraging the extraction and Legato discussions in order to move the pad across E-470 to the east side? And third, can you please reassure us that there is going to be every effort made that the town hall will have people participating in it since it has been a communication issue since Wednesday of last week?
Okay, ma'am. If I may, work backwards with your, your last question first, as it relates to the virtual town hall. Myself and my team and community relations are making every effort in pushing out the link and utilizing social media platform and other forms of media to connect with our residents in order to drive citizen participation at the virtual town hall. So, we are making every effort in order to engage our public, both corporate citizens and residents in being able to receive meaningful feedback that we can share at the next opportunity when we come back to city council with that public draft on the ordinance. As it relates to the second question in regards to Legato, there is only limited scope of what we as city staff and employees can influence, which is a private matter between two parties, obviously, extraction, oil and gas, and the Legato master developer, which is Cohen Airport LLC. You know, as we receive formal applications in respect, with respect to the ROA, the extraction agreement, the BMPs, and obviously, the land development code that is in place at the time will determine our response and review to applications that are before us. So, we have a very limited scope in how we can try to influence the oil and gas well pad moving to the east side. As it relates to the, the first question about publicly stating issues with regards to, to Suncor, once again, our purview is limited to what we can affect at the local government level, which is obviously zoning and permitting of a use within our municipal boundaries. We unfortunately do not have the ability to dictate or to, I'll say, weigh in on the public issues as it relates to things that are governed under by CDPH or its enforcement arm. The position that we've tried to take in being able to present information as it relates to the Suncor refinery is more access, availability of where that information can be found for our population that of concerned citizens that may want to understand and be able to be aware of what is occurring outside of our regulatory role.
Then I will continue to read from the report in the future because this is about our residents and about their safety and about their health. As I noted, the pollution and the emissions contribute to difficulties with respiratory illnesses such as COVID. So, this is something that we need to pay attention to. And if they're going to be our neighbor and our friend in this community, then we need to all be paying attention to them just as we did, as we would for any business in Commerce City. Thank you very much. Mr. Hughesman, I'm ready to make the motion now.
Okay.
I move Resolution 2020-32 Amendment of PSA for the Honan Building.
You moved to approve it?
Oh, yes, moved to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hearst.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2020-32 An Amendment for the Purchase and Sell Agreement for the Honan Building. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2020-32, Resolution approving an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement for the property at 7111 East 56 Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. First ordinance we'll discuss is Ordinance 2268 Weeds and Grass Code Update. First ordinance we'll discuss is Ordinance two two six eight, weeds and grass code update. Like, uh, the Community Development Director Rogers to present the ordinance.
There we go. A little bit of computer trouble. There we go. Thank you very much. Once again, Mayor and City Council. Dylan, if you don't mind bringing up the presentation. Go through the first slide. Um, so I'm here tonight, obviously, to present an update to sections of the municipal code for penalties and maintenance of property in regards to. Weeds and vegetation, uh, starting with the first slide. Uh, in twenty nineteen, uh, staff brought forward information to council at its request. Uh, to better understand the current practice and requirements within the municipal code. Uh, comparison to other municipalities and consistency of application to abatement. Between private property and city property with respects, uh, to weeds and vegetation. In twenty nineteen, two study sessions were held, uh, with the sitting council at that time. Um, at the May study session, what you will find in the first two bullet points under changes suggest, change suggestions. Uh, the conversation focused on the responsibility of maintaining and mowing. Uh, the height limitation and obviously the complexities of, of a tiering system, which will be found on the next slide. And how we compare it to other municipalities in the front range. Um, once again, those two bullet points that you find there, uh, represent some of the s- suggested changes or takeaways, uh, from that meeting. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you, Dylan. Uh, once again, talking about back at the May meeting, we did talk about. Um, once again, updating the lot size from a three-tier system, uh, which is our current model. Uh, within the municipal code to a much more simplistic, uh, and consistent approach. Uh, at the October study session, in addition to the earlier topics that were held in May. Uh, council further discussed the need for significantly, uh, increasing the penalties and adding a surcharge and administrative cost. Uh, for weed abatements, uh, when a notice of violation was issued, uh, and when the property owner did not choose to comply. Um, the two bullet points that you find, uh, with the updated penalty structure from the current state and increasing abatement charges. Uh, were those, uh, similar, uh, I'll say, uh. Similar structures brought forward, um, as, as far as concept, uh, at the October, um, study session. Uh, I will say that at, also at the October study session, staff, uh. Did also provide, uh, feedback that was solicited from the large track owners, uh, which was. Uh, a proper, approximately, uh, five in which we received feedback from. However, we sent a hundred and fifty-seven letters out to. Um, the highlights that were shared at that October meeting were that no changes were needed to our existing, uh, regulations within the municipal code. Uh, that, uh, making any changes would provide an additional hardship and expense to maintain a lower height. Uh, once again, we had talked initially, uh, in May from a twenty-four inch down to a sixteen-inch cut. Uh, and from an unlimited height in certain ac- certain aspects. Uh, we felt that a penalty for their, they felt there was a penalty for their investment within the community. And that, uh, there was an off comment about that owners, uh, would like for undeveloped parcels to be required to spray and mow. Or farm until such time development occurs. Uh, you have those letters that were uploaded to the packet for, uh, for your review tonight as well. Next slide, please, Dylan. Um, from that October study session, the council direction for staff was to move forward with an updated amendment. Uh, that reflected the following, uh, one, provide clear concise language to better address. Uh, the maintenance responsibilities. Is that the city or is that a private property owner's requirements? Uh, in order to move forward with abatement. Um, establish a more consistent look for lots that create, uh, an aesthetically pleasing look. Uh, while also helping to mitigate not just weeds, uh, by mitigating the height regulations on undeveloped lots. Uh, create a new violation process in the fee structure that is specific, uh, to new seed weed regulations and property maintenance. Uh, and then finally, change the current three-tier system to a two-tier system, which is one acre or less, or one acre or more. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide, once again, kind of speaks a little bit more directly towards the specific changes that were made. So in regard to the specific great visions, session six dash twenty twelve A deals with definitions, various definitions that were further clarified. Or defined to provide clarity. Um, the revised section. Uh, of duty to maintain, which is now six dash twenty twelve B. Is where the code was simplified from a three-tier to a two-tier system. That reads as the owner or occupant of any developed property and any property less than equal to one si- one acre in size. Shall maintain weeds and grass, uh, to a height of no more than eight inches anywhere on or within the extended property. Or the oc- owner or occupant of any undeveloped property, the size of which is greater than one acre, shall maintain weeds and grass to a height. Of no more than sixteen inches anywhere on the property and eight inches within anywhere or within the adjacent public right of way. Uh, once again, this is getting towards having a consistently aesthetically pleasing straightscape environment. The next bullet talks about section twenty thirteen, which was removed or ultimately actually rolled into section twelve. And updated to read now as sections A, six A and B. In that the section was updated, updates were to provide clarity. Uh, lastly, sections three dash twenty-three oh four penalties includes a new section in regards to the penalty structure. Structure for properties one acre or greater. Um, before I do finish, uh, my presentation, I did want to make a note. Uh, to make council aware that the item was posted in accordance with the city's requirements. Uh, for this item tonight. However, we will be reaching out, uh, to the stakeholders who had provided us letters. Uh, last year and that the ordinance will be moving forward on second reading, uh, for May eighteenth, if that remains the case. And that public comment can be provided if they would like to continue to provide additional feedback. And what that staff is prepared to answer any questions that you, uh, that you all may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff on this item from council? Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
Yeah, thank you, Jason. I'm just. Thank you. Did you hear me okay?
No, ma'am, I did not.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Jason. I was just. Um, to enforce these new ordinances and do you know, is there a way that there's gonna be follow-up to make sure there's consistency?
So I. I, 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 I believe I, I understood your question. I will try to.
Can you hear me, Jason?
I can, I can hear you. I will try to repeat the question and let me know if I, if I, if I hit it, hit the nail on the head. Um, does city staff have the necessary resources? In order to enforce the regulations? And require abatement to be, uh, conducted, uh, with respect to the new regulations or proposed regulations? Is that accurate enough?
Um, yes, but also like to ensure there, to also ensure there's consistency as well with this, you know, follow-up with the new ordinance.
So with, with respect to, um. With respect to enforcement, yes, we have, we are engaging in a more proactive approach. Uh, operationally to where we are looking for, um, violations and particularly with respect to this regulation. Uh, we would, we would be looking for that consistency in abatement, um, by property owners. As it relates to the required abatement, if a property owner chooses or elects not to. Uh, comply with the regulation, would, that would fall into our public workshop. Uh, and unfortunately, since they are not on, uh, the Zoom meeting, I, I'm not able to kick that to them. Uh, but from all int- from all intended purposes is that we've been made aware that there, there is an ability to be able to ensure, uh, proper compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, I have a comment. I'm, uh. All in favor of this, however, I'm a bit disappointed that word was not sent out to the stakeholders to give them an opportunity to comment on this while we were taking it up on first reading. So I'd like to make a motion to continue this to May eighteenth so that that can happen. I understand that stakeholders have an opportunity to speak during second reading, but I don't like the idea of passing this. And then we hear ideas that maybe we want to incorporate based on their feedback and then have to turn around and start over. So my motion is to continue to May eighteenth. Councilman Madera? Councilman Madera?
Hey, yeah, I'll second that and like to comment. It sounded like we did send out. A hundred and fifty-six letters to, um. To stakeholders and received some comment on that. So, um, I don't know how fair it is to. Say that staff didn't, uh, allow for comment.
I don't believe anybody said that staff didn't allow for comment. Um, Mr. Rogers, can you clarify on what you said regarding, uh, the stakeholders?
Yes, during the study session process. Um, we had sent between the month of May and October, a hundred and, I believe, fifty-seven. Uh, letters out to large property tract owners. Um. That being said, um, we only received five at the May and, and we provided the highlights from those five letters. And those five letters in which we had received, um, feedback from our approach. Uh, were uploaded and presented to council tonight.
Great. And so my co- my, my reason for the, uh, continuance. Is you indicated that those stakeholders had not been notified that we were taking this item up on our agenda this evening?
Yes, we didn't specifically reach back out to the five that we had received. Uh, the letters from during the study session a- about the draft. Uh, that being said, we did post and, and obviously notice this item. Um, for an agenda to be heard by, by Mayor and City Council. And followed the direction of council to, at the October meeting to bring this ordinance forward.
Right. And like I said, I, I'm all for the ordinance. I want to see the ordinance passed. However, I do believe that those five entities that sent out. Should be notified that we're taking this up on first reading because they have participated in the process. Although we put stuff on the agenda, these entities may not know every week to go in and look at the agenda and determine whether or not there's something that could impact them. They've taken the initiative to respond to the letters that were sent out to them. I'd like to give them the opportunity to come and provide their feedback. Um, have a motion. Do I still have a second? Councilman Madera? Councilmember, are you still seconding that motion? I think maybe his screen is frozen or he's not there. All right. Any other discussion on that? Councilwoman Grimes?
Um, I was just going to agree that it looks like a lot of the comments that came back were actually questions. Um, of concern from some of the stakeholders, so I would, I would second the motion to continue.
All right. Well, I definitely have a motion in a second to continue. Councilman Wadiola, did you have comments?
No, sir.
Great. Any other discussion? All right. So I have a motion in a second to continue this to the May eighteenth meeting. Uh, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes nine to zero.
Right. So that item will be continued, will be taken up on first reading again on, uh, May eighteenth. Would ask the community development, reach out to the individuals who have submitted. Um, possibly even, uh, reach out to everybody that you initially reached out to and let them know that it's coming, but that's your choice. At least at a minimum, reach out to the five people that submitted comments. Thank you much. All right. Next up, we have ordinance two two seven six, which is recognition of CARES Act funding and approval for a related IGA. Does anyone on the city council have questions for staff regarding this ordinance? All right. Seeing none, I have no one registered to provide public comment. No written comments were submitted. Looking for a motion in a second to introduce and approve ordinance two two seven six on first reading by council seated. Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, I motion to introduce and approve ordinance two two seven six on first reading by council seated.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to introduce and approve ordinance two two seven six on first reading by council seated. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance two two seven six and ordinance amending the twenty twenty budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by recognizing CARES Act funding and authorizing the execution of a related intergovernmental agreement.
I have a motion in a second. The city attorney has read the title. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is administrative council business. First for the item is a discussion on future board and commission meeting schedules. Will the city clerk please provide an update on board and commissions?
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman and members of the city council. I just wanted to follow up from the discussion we had two weeks ago on April twentieth about the board and commission meetings. As Deputy City Manager Smith and Deputy City Manager Tinklinburg alluded to earlier. Uh, staff liaisons for your various boards and commissions have been meeting either informally via telephone, email. Um, or teleconference or formally via, uh, special meetings such as the QCF. Um, the upcoming cultural council meeting and the upcoming planning commission meeting, which will also be a, uh, quasi judicial public hearing hosted virtually. Um, at this time, it appears that the direction you provided two weeks ago, uh, has been sufficient for staff and the board and commission members as far as I've heard. Um, but this item will remain, uh, rolling on the agendas. Uh, since things have been changing so rapidly from day to day and week to week that way. Um, at any time that it seems that the council, uh, feels insufficient to resume regular meetings. Uh, you guys can act on that at the neck, next regular meeting. Um, so at this point, that's the only update I have on those. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Are there any dis- uh, questions for Mr. Gibson? Councilman Hearst?
Um, thanks for that update, Dylan. My question's not so much directly, uh, directly to you, but you may answer it, obviously. But it more, maybe more so to Brian, um, but. As we are, you know, adapting to, uh, the changes and a lot of the, you know. Critical decisions have been made and we're kind of in this, uh, operation. For this amount of, you know, for this short term, what is the capacity for our staff to be able to support more, um. Regular boards and commission meetings? Has it not changed? Has it improved? Uh, what do you think on that?
Um, Mr. McBroom, I see you started your video, so if you'd like to answer that.
I would say that, um. Our capacity to conduct special board and commission meetings is limited. Uh, there have been, uh, some additional special board and commission. Uh, there have been uh, some additional special board and commission meetings that have been scheduled. We're doing our best to. Uh, to accommodate those. I am concerned that if we went back to a regular meeting schedule. It uh, might push us beyond our capacity to support that many uh, Zoom meetings. But I think it's good to revisit it every two weeks and see if we're in a, in a position either. Uh, both from the standpoint of staff capacity and uh, do we have a lot of work building up amongst our board and commissions? Where it's really important to start having regular meetings. Uh, I, I am under the understanding that those boards and commissions that have. A critical business, we are setting up special meetings so that they can conduct that business. Two great examples, our planning commission. And QCF, they both have timely work that they have to do. Um, and so uh, I think it's best if we can continue on that special meeting. Uh, system, but then revisit it every time the city council needs.
And just to touch on that, Mr. McBroom, um, we had a pre-meeting for the planning commission last week with about. Five to six staff members that all touched various aspects of that planning commission meeting. Um, that was about an hour to an hour and a half meeting just to get them prepped on how to use Zoom, use the functionality. Um, the features, how roll calls have to be taken, um, various aspects of the meeting that, you know, three or four different planning. Our community development staff touch along with IT, community relations publishing that. So it's very intensive just for one meeting. Um, for the planning commission that's coming up.
Any other? Go ahead.
Just uh, sorry, just to finish up on that, you know, I think the, the special meetings are something we should definitely um, begin to adapt to. Because I feel like that'll give us the opportunity to become efficient in these meetings, um, find ways to. Support them that isn't taking so much time and effort, um, and try to adapt to uh, what potentially could be, you know. Could happen more often uh, than we're used to and so. Um, you know, I see it happening in other, in other government agencies and so I think we. I'm not asking us to adapt immediately and go to a full schedule, but I think if we can. Try to support those special meetings, I think that would be good for, for. Uh, good perspectives as we're starting to open up um, slowly and, and get back to some operations.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Great, I do want to thank uh, Mr. McBroom as well as the staff that enabled the Quality Community Foundation to have their special meeting. They were able to get their grants uh, for the nonprofits out the door and get those awarded, which in this time. When nonprofits need all the funding they can get, it's good to see that they were able to facilitate that and ensure that that can take place. So thank you very much for that. Uh, next on the administrative council business is the discussion on COGCC rulemaking. Um, during the oil and gas update, we heard staff's recommendation to approve a letter regarding COGCC rulemaking and public drinking water systems. Is there a motion to authorize the letter to be signed on by Commerce City to the COGCC? Councilwoman Noble?
I move to approve um, the letter to the COGCC about groundwater. Um, uh, I don't have it in front of me. Okay, hang on a minute here. I'll get this. Uh, oh, it's way back behind. Oh, approve a letter regarding COGCC rulemaking and public drinking water systems. Did you follow that?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a motion to approve Commerce City signing on to the letter to the COGCC about uh, drinking water systems. Councilman Madera?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously nine to zero.
Thank you very much. That's all we have on the agenda for that at this time. Are there any council members that have administrative business they would like to discuss? I don't see any hands raised. I'll ask one more time just to make sure everybody heard. Are there any council members that have administrative action or business they'd like to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman. Uh, two items. One is uh. Councilmember Hurst and Councilwoman Noble were contacted as our E four seventy board members with the request. Uh, for council to hear a presentation from E four seventy about designating E four seventy as a hazardous materials route. Uh, E four seventy began a process to study the possibility about two years ago. City council in January of twenty nineteen sent a letter authorizing a, a study of. Potentially making E four seventy a hazardous materials route. Uh, E four seventy is ready to come back with the results of that study and so we've tentatively scheduled that for May eighteenth. I do believe what will come with that presentation will be a need to provide direction. Uh, to Mr. Hurst and Ms. Noble as your representatives on the E four seventy board of directors. As to how you uh, would like them to vote on that matter. Uh, it's our understanding that E four seventy is looking for uh, its board to. Uh, take an action uh, by the end of May on whether to pursue designating E four seventy as a hazardous. Uh, hazardous materials route. I mentioned it um, both to make you aware that it's coming on May eighteenth. Uh, but also there is, I, I wouldn't say controversy, uh, but there is a lot of debate amongst council members a couple of years back. On whether designating E four seventy as a hazardous materials route was a good idea or not. Uh, so for a number of you, it's a new concept. Uh, there's not a lot of time for you to get up to speed, so be looking for the packet materials. In advance of the May eighteenth meeting, a representative from E four seventy will participate in the meeting to present the findings of their study. Uh, and we will anticipate, uh, we're still confirming with E four seventy, but we anticipate the council will need to take an action that night. To provide direction uh, to either Mr. Hurst or Ms. Noble, whoever uh, uh, might be in attendance the night. Uh, or the morning that E four seventy's board takes an action on that matter. So that's one item. The second, uh, you heard in our COVID nineteen update, these are terribly uncertain times, so we are busy. Uh, trying to adapt to, to the new environment when the rules uh, keep changing. I continue to be grateful and impressed with city staff's commitment to doing their best to serving the community. In these uncertain times, I continue to see great attitudes and great collaboration among city employees. Uh, even though I, I understand it's incredibly stressful, uh, our preference is to. Uh, understand the rules of the game and then do our best to perform to the best of our ability within those rules. And we're just not in that sort of an environment right now. Our staff continues to be very creative in their thinking, very adaptable. Uh, and I'm uh, extremely proud of the work that our folks are doing on a daily basis. Uh, so that is it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman and council. I just want to note that I sent out uh, the monthly litigation and pending ordinance report today. But also to note that uh, we're, we're very busy, obviously dealing um, throughout my office with this and ongoing city issues. But please feel free to reach out to me if you have ideas that you want to bounce off to me. Um, relating whether or not it's to the shutdown or to any ongoing city business, um, I am available to you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Are there any other council members that have any reports they wish to make? Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm continuing to participate in the uh, senior. Resource and recovery program, although they now call it aging. I'm not sure that I want to be called aging, by the way, but they didn't ask me in the survey, so. It's no longer senior is aging. And the other one is the Business Resources and Recovery Group. And um, in particular on that, well, on both of them, on the Aging Resources and Recovery. There uh, were a tremendous number of PPE that came into Adams County that has been delivered. To all of the nursing homes and convalescent centers and assisted living, et cetera. Throughout the area, whoever uh, needed them, there were phone calls that went out, so that was a really uh, robust effort. On the part of Adams County was really great. And secondly, on the Business Resources and Recovery. Last week, there were uh, breakout groups and um, there was a wonderful uh. Synthesis that was sent along with what was determined by each of the breakout groups that businesses would need. And I'm never quite sure how I'm supposed to handle this. I sent it uh, to the city manager. But I would really like all of you to see it as opposed to me going through each of these. And um, so as you're talking to people in the community who are involved in, in business, that you'll be able to uh, see this as well. Is that appropriate if, if I send something like that to all of the council members? Or can the city manager?
Uh, Mr. McBroom can forward that on to everybody?
Just a, just a quick note in that regard, uh, where we have those updates from the various county committees, we've been including them in the city manager update. Uh, that we send out on Thursday or Friday every week. If uh, if that's a little bit late to be getting the information, it's no problem for us to forward it on to council as soon as we get it. And publish it in the city manager update.
Okay, that would be great to do both because it's, it's about three pages and it would make your update quite lengthy. But I think it was a lot of worthwhile information. Of course, employees at these businesses are equally concerned about the customers who come into them. So that's something we all need to be aware of also. Thanks so much. That's it.
Any other council members wish to make a report? Seeing none, I have very limited to report. I'm continuing to participate in the Metro Mariccos meetings as well as the AdCog. Uh, meetings on Thursday evenings. Um. I'll leave it at that. Uh, any other items before we adjourn? Seeing no other business to come for the city of Commerce City, we are adjourned. Thank you everybody for your time. Have a wonderful evening, good week and see you on May eighteenth.